Welcome everybody to our meeting. I declare a forum present. I call the meeting to order. I want to give notice that the planning board meetings are broadcast and digitally recorded. I don't know whether we have a sign in sheet tonight and whether I-
We do it at the hall.
Well, if you- we begin our meetings with a public comment session. So, and I usually ask people to sign in. If you didn't get a chance to sign in, I guess you could sign in later.
I got it. There is.
If you want to speak at the public comment session, just stand up and identify yourself, your name and address. Make your comments to the full board. And we do have a big agenda and unlimited battery life on our camera, so try to be brief. And you may not respond immediately, but anything the public says is important to us. And if we don't respond here and now, and it requires a response, we will respond. So, anybody wishing to speak during the public comment period? Okay, if we don't have anyone wishing to speak right now, we'll move on to the item four. Item three on the agenda is minute approval and they're not- they weren't finished in time. So, our first action item is a taste of decision review and approval. So, where this matter stands is that we voted two weeks ago to approve the application for a permit for the reclamation of the former clay pit at 26 Worcester Road. Using the process presented by Mr. Talby from Casella who's here tonight, and subject terms and conditions discussed, and to our consultant, Mr. Murray, preparing a draft decision for us, which he has and which we have tonight, and which there are copies available. Right Christina?
Yes, I saw it.
So if you want a copy of what was- Of the draft decision?
Draft decision.
You didn't want a draft copy? Okay. Really, if there's no place for Christina, people can just sit at the table tonight. Okay, so I want to stress that our action tonight is really an administrative action. The decision to issue the permit was made at the last meeting. So, questions and comments that we discuss tonight should relate specifically to the draft decision. Our goal tonight is to correct any errors, omissions, clarify points of confusion, and then sign the decision so the permit can issue. The decision must be, after we sign it, filed with the town clerk within five days. And there's a 20-day appeal period. It also must be reported at the registry of deeds before work can commence. Finally, our bylaws also say that the planning board consultant must be paid for his work done in connection with issuing the permit, and financial arrangements must be made for supervision of the project by the planning board going forward. So I've asked Mr. Murray to address those issues this evening. So, Mr. Murray, I would like to ask you to go over any new issues, which are issues raised after our last meeting, resulting from your preparing the draft or from comment solicited in its circulation. And I would say to the board, the draft that you have was circulated to the board? Was it a different draft?
This is the latest-
Just the final draft?
As of noonish today.
Okay, but there were, that did incorporate some changes and comments. The way it worked is, he prepared his draft, he circulated it to the board members and to Mr. Talby. We are not allowed, we could respond with comments back to Mr. Murray, but the open meeting laws prohibit us from discussing the matter among ourselves in private. So, what I want you to do is, Mr. Murray, is to tell us what changes were made and questions raised. And I'm thinking specifically of the ones I know about from reading, which are traffic, the junk removal, and fee issues. But there may be other issues. So do you want to walk us through that?
I do want to bring to the board's attention, I printed it out and copies are here, that the board and I received from Clark James from Casella Organics, an email at 3:30 this afternoon.
Can I get a copy?
Yeah, here you go. And it was just too late in the day and I had already sent this draft out. So I did not address them, and quite frankly, it's not my place to address them. Those are decisions to be made by the board. So I don't know if you want to take those up, but on the draft, the changes, most of the changes were clerical, typographicals. One of the issues that we knew was going to come up was number- I didn't provide this one. Number 18. Prior to the commencement of any site work, the applicant owner shall provide information to the board and police chief regarding the number of construction and delivery vehicles likely construction routes and timelines for construction. The police department reserves the right to require a police detail paid at the expense of the applicant owner if it is determined that construction traffic is impacting local roadways. That was a request by a board member after a conversation, Craig, after a conversation with the police chief. Mr. Talby and I spoke earlier today, so I called the police department earlier today. Actually sent them an email saying, "If the traffic is as light as they anticipated, are you likely to require a police detail?" The chief is away, I don't know if he's on vacation or not, but Sergeant-
Kuchar.
Kuchar, thank you. Right, he's the acting chief. And he said, "Given the traffic, it is extremely unlikely" that they would have four to six trucks in and out a day. It is extremely unlikely because of the fact that the board is already restricting the traffic to standard business hours, not including weekends except on exceptional cases. Dusk is the shutdown, so they won't be going in and out at night. We've also included in the description that, and they pointed out themselves, that that is an extremely steep driveway, and they're not going to be driving on the driveway when it's got ice or any impediment. And that's part of the conditions. So with all those things in mind, his suggestion was, my suggestion was, "Well, let's do the first day with a detail." And he said, "No, let's do it the other way. Let's not do a detail, and if we determine it's a problem, then we will require a detail." After all that conversation, I reviewed our town bylaws. We don't need to put this in here, because the police chief, on his own action and his own motion, if he determines it to be a hazard, can require them to put a detail. And in addition, it is part of the state highway layout. They can always, our police can always call the state police and they can require a detail. So it is, I don't think that there's a problem here. I think this reserves the right of the town and shows that the planning board is being proactive and protective. But you're not establishing any condition that the police chief doesn't already have. So that was number 18. We added number 20. Where is it? I thought it was 28. We added 28, page eight to 10. So this is really the only substantive change that was made from last week. And all it says, which the applicant has already said on the deep key, has been informed, that all the organic product is coming from the Irving paper mill. Nothing's coming from New Hampshire. And so we assert that as an affirmative condition. And that if they change that, there is no prohibition per se on changing it. But if you do change it, the planning board needs to be notified and they need to make a determination whether it's significant or not.
Kind of a quick question. It's not just the source, but it's potentially even partial source, right? As it's indicated on the second page, it says the modification of the source may be determined. So not the source in its entirety, but even a partial source. So if there is a combined, if there's a combination of a material that comes out, not out of Irving, that would also be considered to be a modification. I just want to make sure that we are understanding that it's not the source in its entirety, but even an addition or partial addition or partial modification of the source. So if 100% it's coming from Irving, you're fine. But if, say for example, anything less than 100% comes in from Irving, that would be considered a modification.
It says all organic fill materials come from Irving.
I understand that, but it says a modification of the source. As it stated on the second page. And the way I read that is, a modification of the source would mean that, a modification meaning that if they go out, the way I would read this here is that they decide to go out and get similar material or other material from a different source in its entirety. That's how I read it. And I would like to indicate that my interpretation would be is that any change-
Any modification.
Any modification.
I just have a point of question. Is the sample that was sent out for testing, that we sent out to meet our bylaw-
Yeah.
That was specific to this, to the Irving product, right? So-
Uh, no.
It was not?
The PhD reviewed all of the product materials and issued an opinion on both Nashua and Irving, that both are essentially benign.
Okay, they don't violate our bylaw, okay.
That's what the LSP from SWCA said. Casella Organics actually affirmatively made the statement to you, the planning board, that only Irving, they've taken Nashua?
Yes.
Nashua out?
Yes.
We do have to bring in fertilizer. Is that going to be under this too?
That's not an organic fill material.
Okay, that's, okay. That was my question.
Okay.
There's no prohibition.
That Nashua is no longer in our-
Matter of fact, there is a requirement for fertilizer meeting 330 CMR. And I don't, non-agricultural application of fertilizer. But 330 CMR is the phosphorus bylaw. I don't know if you know of it. But soils are supposed to be tested and you're only supposed to fertilize in accordance with the requirements of the testing. So that's all we're looking for. And so that is number 36. Which says, yeah, we affirmatively state that fertilizer needs to be used.
Irving's the only good show. There's nothing else in our system. We come to most of that.
Good enough. It's a non-issue, right? Other than that, there were typos hours of operation, which I cleaned up, and some minor name changes.
What mine? Mine too.
There, I know there was a-
Took it from the website.
Well, it's right some page, it's not others, but that's okay. We can modify it.
There was an issue about junk removal that was raised. Did that line just be in here or not?
No, junk cars.
Junk cars.
Yes, this last item.
Is it omitted, or is it in here?
Thirty-nine, page nine to 10.
Okay. You wanted to run through that, because it wasn't covered in our last hearing.
Right, and this is a discretionary item. Still have editor's note in here, which I guess I need to take out since we're making changes. Is, the town of Hubbardston has a general bylaw cited here that unless you're a licensed junk dealer, a junkyard, you're not allowed to have more than one unregistered motor vehicle on the property, not in a garage or otherwise contained. And when we did the sidewalk, I think we saw more than one of those vehicles up there.
Couple disappeared.
I didn't hear that one.
Couple were gone.
Oh.
Couple will be gone all right. The other two are going to be gone within a few more days.
Okay, so this isn't a problem for you?
No.
And it wouldn't apply to farm equipment, it's vehicles? Okay, all right, fine. Now this is resolved then. Unless, I mean, my feeling is, it is a bylaw and as we're issuing permits, we should try to, you know, help the town and make applicants comply with as many as that are reasonable and apply.
So I did do a graphic for site distance and-
On the traffic issue?
Yeah.
Yes, go through it. This was a subject of a lot of discussion, but not between us. Just between individuals and Bill.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
So the question is, the driveway is located here. The problem is, you've got a very steep grade going in. The driveway itself is not in good condition. And the concern of a member of the board, even my concern, is a truck coming in, it's probably going to have to turn, he's going to have to slow down pretty good, because it's a very big upgrade. He's probably going to have to cross the double yellow line to make that turn, because the driveway is not overly wide.
No, no, I take you back there. That driveway is designed for trailing down trucks.
Okay, that's good.
So it can turn south or north, either direction. It doesn't matter.
In any case, they have more than adequate, I mean, it's on a straightaway. It's a newly repaved road. The site distances are way more than what they need.
I think speed limit's 35, isn't it?
Halfway down the hill. You get out of the village-
It's 50 where they go by there.
But you guys are going to be coming down the hill and slowing down, not speeding up.
The trucks will be coming turning around.
Yeah, so you become in this direction.
An easy train.
And we're requiring a stop sign at the intersection to be put, just for safety sake. So, from an engineering point of view, we don't see this issue. We've spoken to the police department. They don't see access into this site as an issue. But the sergeant did say that he didn't see a problem with the condition, but they would only exercise it if in their discretion, it became a problem.
Okay.
May I say something?
You may, go ahead.
Back when we were in operation, we had, our business, they, we had 112 loaded trucks leave that property. And we were in business for 10, 12 years. We never had one incident down there.
I remember.
And we've had over 60,000 loads come in and out of that property, and we never had a problem with a stop sign in the mud.
No, I appreciate that.
I don't know what more I can say.
I think, I think that-
A hundred and twelve trucks a day kind of proves that it's a safe driving to come down. And the trucks were loaded coming down. These trucks are going to be empty. I mean, if they can't stop, then they shouldn't be on the road.
Right, they're going to be loaded going up and empty coming down. All right, all right. We appreciate your comments. Shall we move? You want to discuss the fee issues here?
Sure.
Because it is a requirement, that we pay him for his work done, and it's before the permit can issue, and that we make arrangements for supervised visits. And so I asked him to come up with estimates for what this would cost.
So, there are three proposals there. One is the old letterhead that I had. And I have copies of the invoice, so I just made them up today.
These are fresh off the press?
Yes, yeah.
I'm willing to share with John, if you want to give the, how many copies you have.
I have nine.
Okay. Give our petitioner's one.
So that was my original proposal, it was, I think, $760, and that was for the review of the application. It actually took me $2,800, but my proposal said it was $760. Then there's a second proposal that I issued, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, for $1,200, to for this meeting and to develop the draft permit. So that's what this invoice is for. And then I gave you a third proposal for construction support. And we estimated that at $3,300. So the one thing that I do say in the proposal, services not provided or not built. So we anticipate that there's a pre-construction meeting standing out there, just everybody talking to make sure everybody's on the same page. Torrential downpours, I almost always go to a site and inspect the site after a torrential downpour. That's part of the federal standards, National Blute Discharge Elimination System. And then there are two sidewalks and coordination for closeout. And then another one for affirmative statement that the bond should be released. And that's a proposal only. I haven't done any of that work. And that's for $3,300. Now, depending upon the timeline of this project, if these guys are in and out in two months, it won't be that much. I just assume for a four-month window, and then a follow-up a year later. Because our regulations state that the bond isn't released until after a year expires after stabilization.
Are there other issues that anybody on the board wishes to ask Bill at this point? And then I'm going to ask, let Mr. Talby speak, and address his concerns. Okay, Mr. Talby, you want to walk us through your comments and let us know?
Clark, this is Clark James, and-
Hello?
Do you know Eric?
I do know Eric, yes.
Because we're here now almost in September, very quickly, our window keeps getting narrower to do this. Item number 20. What if we, I mean 21. What if we propose that we do some site work, not related to bringing materials in after this October 31st, to prepare the site? Because we don't really feel as if we have enough time right now to go full on, especially, we were hoping to do this when it was dry and hot. And it's getting moist in there right now, and it's a clay pit. And we're not looking to set up a disaster for ourselves.
Gets kind of slick.
So, the trees need to be amended a little bit, and we need to expose the soil that we want to mix. Can we work on some of this after this timeline? There's a gate closed on October 31st. No paper coming in, obviously, after October 31st. We understand that for our own safety reasons. But driving a pickup truck out there to run up a small machine to get things ready.
My reading of that does, I mean, it even says the intent is to avoid, I don't see anything that prohibits you from trucking in machinery and not trucking in the product.
Yeah, it just says avoiding trucks on slippery slopes.
Maybe you might say-
We don't want slippery slopes.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see a D8 come down that hill with a half inch of snow on the ground.
We've worked plenty, I know. We've worked plenty in the winter time. We usually set up in a town, we hire the local guy to salt and sand for us. That's standard procedure. But we, that place is not going to work very well in October and November after the rain, it's not going to dry out now. So we really need the heat of the summer. And that's Eric's concern, the contract.
Well, there is work that we could do to prep the site for paper during the winter months if the weather was reasonable. It's frozen solid, forget it, it's not, it's kind of a weather issue. But there is work that we could do in there to prep the site for paper in the spring and summer that would involve being in there, doing the work, or doing some work. Not necessarily for-
So I don't read 21, I personally don't read 21 prohibits that.
Correct. So are your thoughts, are you not going to be able to bring them this fall and do this now? Because of the weather and the time?
Well, the timeline, we were, you know, before this all happened, we were planning on being here in July. And now here we are, the end of August. And we still have, you know, some time to go here before we get approval and the-
Only if you guys can give us more conditions.
I'm willing to add a clarification sentence if you need this necessary-
We're modifying it anyway, so.
That would say, this won't preclude-
Site prep.
Site preparation and associated vehicles.
I mean, if we can't find suitable material, gravel, on-site, we might have to bring something to build a road to go down. So there would be material coming in, it just would be-
But that could be stump righties too. It could be an organic material. Stump righties are a great temporary road for the big trucks. They float really nice, shed water. And then we break down into the biomass. Yeah, as it gets wetter here, we're just concerned that the trails with 30 tons on them might go in, but not come out so low.
But if you were to have a prolonged Indian summer, maybe we change or?
Well, I think there's something that may be able to be done, and sometimes you just can't do it.
Well, what can we do with this process we're talking about right now? Can we speed this up a little? Is there anything we can do to? How much longer is this process going to take in this permitting?
We're into it now.
No, I mean, my first time, folks, I've never done this, so I don't know.
We can, I think, just expedite what we're doing. They can't do it without a current decision.
Right, right.
As soon as that decision's signed, it can be delivered to the clerk.
We can make these-
They have five days.
Your computer is there, right?
I can go the other room and type this up if we need to.
Yeah, we can make, I have my computer. We can make these changes right now.
And print it?
And print it.
All it's-
I don't have a problem, I have everybody else's okay with that.
I just got sure that, you have a whole page of comments here, which I haven't really read. And now I've lost it. Where is it? What, can you, can you walk us through your other concerns? You're addressed here.
We can, how do you feel about the police situation then?
To address that out immediately?
At first it was kind of, a little bit, okay, now.
I think it's been kind of covered, I don't think you really have to worry about it.
At first it was a little bit, it took my breath away from me, like, oh my God, here we go. We don't need this situation.
We need, it was very helpful to know, four trucks a day, the details, which we didn't have at the last meeting, I mean, it was board members.
So when I explained it to the police, I said four to six.
Yeah, because the paper mill is a, there's a lot of machinery. Sometimes, there's only two trucks one day, and then those other two or three are going to come the next day. So it's an average of four, but they have, the trucks break down. This, we need a tiny bit of flexibility built in. And someone's not there with a counter saying, "Aha, there's four, now there's five, and we have a big problem."
Yes, we have to put a limitation in here.
So that's, just a little bit of flexibility for weather conditions, mechanical issues.
Well, the sense I get is that the chief says, or Sergeant, acting chief, says that it's not an issue until it becomes an issue.
And if it becomes an issue, they have independent authority to put it on you anyway. Or they call the state police and they put it on you.
Yeah, I mean, it is a state road, so really they'd be jumping in there if they needed it.
Yeah, so the planning board, it just is a marker notifying you and notifying the public that they're trying to take care of the concerns that have been raised by the public.
So have we addressed the concerns in your letter sufficiently?
Well, I think we had an issue with the number of inspections that would be required.
Okay, more space?
Well, where this isn't actually an earth removal permit, we're restoring the site. It's not an ongoing sand and gravel excavation operation, where you would typically be doing inspections over time to assure that they don't have more than two acres open at any given time, the slopes aren't exceeding the standard. We're in there doing the restorations to close the site down. We expect to be in and out of there fairly quickly. I don't know, it's our timeline for this, you know.
The acreage-
Once we get done, how long?
It's only nine, it's barely nine acres.
I mean, it's a pretty small-scale site for us. So, it seemed to me to be overkill to have a number of inspections. I can understand, you know, we're in the process of restoring the site to prevent erosion. I can understand if you want to have somebody come in after a heavy rainfall event to assure that conditions haven't deteriorated. But in essence, we're bringing in materials to improve the quality of the site and improve protection of surface water and gravel water. So, anything that we're doing, super-dol, and a bunch of pieces, and that, and that can cound and land on us. So, again, I'm willing to work with you on some inspections, but it seemed a little deferment in the way it's written in the permit. And it seemed much more appropriate for a sand and gravel excavation permit.
Does the town inspect the gravel pits in town that are in violation of the reclamation orders?
We do not have other reclamation orders pending. That's one reason this has been a trial for us. Because we had passed a new bylaw a few years ago to address this issue, and nobody's gone through it. Unfortunately, luck of the first draw. I would say this, though, with inspections, there are things that we are concerned about. We had, and you weren't here the last time, but we have people passionately speak about odors. So one of our conditions is that your product be mixed with the soil within the yellow out. So, one of our conditions is that your product be mixed with the soil within the yellow to, to be there more than forty-eight hours. So, there are, there are, there are things also that might require inspections that wouldn't in an ordinary gravel pit, you know what I mean? So, but I'm going to let Bill answer that question. What, inspections, he wasn't paying attention.
I was not, I meant it.
Inspections, they think we have required committing inspections. But is there a set number of inspections you're requiring, maybe you could point this out to us?
Yeah, it's in the, in the permit. It's pretty normal, um, a setup to make sure everybody's on the same page. And what I propose is a setup, when they mobilize, I show up on site, just say, if they point, I point, everybody points, and we're unhappy, I write a report, we have a torrential down before I show up, and it's either three or four inspections at the end of the project, because they say they're done, I go and inspect, yeah, I agree, they're done, or they're not done. And each inspection is about four hundred dollars, because it takes an hour, hour and a half, and then it takes an hour, hour and a half to write a report. Um, so, my last proposal actually breaks it down pretty clearly.
Right, which is the...
The one hundred and thirty-five dollar one?
The thirty-three, those are invoices.
This is a possible one going up to thirty-five?
Fifty-seven, right?
Yeah.
Three site visits are expected, he says, at a cost of four twenty per visit.
It's page seven to ten, page seventeen, B. Limited clearing, barrier location, erosion controls, regular constructions as determined by the board, especially after intense rainfall or weather conditions. And if you're going to be there in the winter and we, and it's not frozen ground, I'm going to drive by and see what's going on. Any inspecting, a certificate of completion, and they release a bond. So, it's not overly burdensome, the faster you go, the lesser number of inspections I do. We've had a history of really well-meaning contractors, uh, but the weather has been rather brutal sometimes, and we've had some spectacular blowouts, uh, where we filled an endangered species habitat with two feet of sand to, to the tune of half an acre. So, we're a little, little aware of all these kind of things. Again, I can understand and appreciate that for ongoing excavations and traction projects, where we're doing a reclamation restoration. So, I think, I believe there will be some contouring and some, probably some slope adjustments, because I think it's a...
Oh, no, he's a lot of that.
But it's the same, the difference to me, because we normally operate in the absence of site inspection, or jurisdiction. Yeah, that's on a farm, this is on a farm.
Back when we were in operation, we had one major, major rainfall, probably, I would almost call it a hundred years' fall. The water never left the property, the retention funds felt everything a hundred percent the way it was supposed to. So, unless we have another hundred years' fall, I don't expect any problems on the whole site. Because we control all our water, all our water stays on our property through our retention funds and then into a storm, so...
We, we, we read some, some, um, some of the reports stated that same thing, put a sticker here from here. Um, I don't know, this says we, it, um, site visits, three site visits and reports, there is a requirement for reports to us, it's in the bylaw, actually. Um, and we don't, we didn't write the bylaw, we're just trying to comply with it. Uh, we can try to do the best we can, we have returned money to people that have been set forward, it wasn't all used, so to the extent you can consolidate the visits and consolidate the work, it won't be used. But we can't release a bond without applying inspection and so forth, so...
Bill, I didn't catch your last comment, you made something about response to my last comment, but I didn't quite catch it. I, um, I'm doing too many things.
He was, he was making the difference between a gravel removal and fill, it's different.
I don't know, you know, you guys are, if, if you have an acre, more than an acre of land open, you have to file for a national pollutant discharge elimination permit from the feds, that's federal law, and it requires inspections, and it's entirely up to the board if they want to reduce the number of inspections, when I do the kickoff meeting, I invite the fire chief, I invite the police chief, we make sure everybody is on DPW, whether they show up or not, we make sure everybody's on the same page, we make sure all the communication lines have been clearly established, and all the pre-construction requirements have been met. Uh, we have yet to have a project that has met all the pre-construction requirements prior to the date of construction, because there are a few things in here, and, I mean, one of them didn't file their order of conditions, another one started work without notifying the town at all, I mean, it just is, every single large-scale project that's been going on in this town, we have a history of, so we've learned from it. Likewise, with the bond, there's quite a lot of verbiage about the bond, because it's a big deal about the bond, releasing the bond is burdensome for this board, and it's not an easy thing to do, and if the property sells before the project is done, then transferring the bond...
We, you cannot believe the trouble we've had, properties that have sold, stuff that's sold or...
So, that's, that's where the genesis of all this comes from, and I appreciate, it, it's not my call to make, I'm making a recommendation via this draft to the board, um, the fa, as I said, the faster you guys go, the lesser number of inspections I would obviously do.
So, could, could I ask, I mean, we have, there's a section seventeen B is really the place where the inspections are delineated, right?
Correct.
On page seven, so I see item number one under section seventeen B one, that's one inspection, correct?
Correct.
And then, uh, item three is another inspection for all intents and purposes.
Three is two.
Two inspections, two separate inspections?
Two separate.
Okay, so that's, those are two.
Because you don't release the bond, it's like buying a house, you know, you, you do an inspection, okay, I'll buy your house, now I'm buying the house, just before I move in, I make sure it's okay.
And number two, which we skipped over, can be one or more depending, obviously, on the circumstances, right?
Correct, yeah.
And the circumstances are really guided, uh, by weather conditions primarily.
Mother nature.
Mother nature, and that's not necessarily in our control, it's not in their control, it's in mother nature's control, right?
Correct.
As long as it's outside of the October thirty-first to the April timeline.
So, number two also accommodates an inspection requested by the board, so if you get a complaint...
Exactly. All right, so I, I mean, I, I look at number one as something that is, I, I mean, that is a requirement, we all need to make sure that we all look at something and we understand what the rules or the rules are going ahead. Section three, where we are looking at the certificate of completion, the release of the reduction of bonding requirements, those are must-haves.
Correct.
What is in between is not really up to us, except for the complaints from mother nature, correct?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's outside the control of the board.
I mean, I'm saying, is, is, I don't think that there's a lot of leeway here to make any kind of changes here, and I hope that you understand that, for the way I'm looking at this here, is that number one, as well as number three, are steady, they're fixed.
I can, I can understand it, all I'm saying is, it's a departure from our custody area.
I understand it's a depart, it is a departure, but it is, it is good protocol towards the citizens of the town.
And this is also required under that new bylaw?
The inspections are required and reports, yeah.
Yep, so...
And the release and the certificates, all...
I mean, we can get rid of number one, but that's the lines of communication and make sure everybody's on the exact same page.
And I think that is...
That's kind of short-sighted.
Exactly, that's elementary for a good, for a good process.
Right. And of course, complaints are hopefully totally within Casello's control.
Correct.
Um, whether none of us have any, any control of, uh, you know, if, I'm more than willing to make, make a phone call, okay, we got a torrential down, or how's the site doing, and then send me some pictures, and not do an inspection, but, you know, it's still going to occur in an hour of time, and, I mean, I'm going to send your pictures on to the board with a recommendation, you know, so there is time in there.
But I don't think that we should be putting anything here in terms of the frequency of the inspections need to be changed, I mean, I think that you, you've outlined very succinctly what the inspections need to take place, how these inspections have to take place. You, as an expert, I believe, have, has that...
Discretion.
Discretion, exactly, the discretion of how you want to do that, and therefore the, the cost that is therefore incurred by Casello as a result of that. Okay?
So, we're ready to end the, the fee discussion, I don't think it requires a vote. I do think it requires an understanding that the work that's been done needs to be paid, and an account needs to be set up for which the inspection fee can be paid.
Okay.
Okay, so, um...
Do we need a motion to make the change official?
Well, I think there's still some changes here that I think we'd like to, I have some questions, so...
We really haven't given, we've been sort of responding to...
Right, right.
To the two experts, so, do you want to open up questions from the board, unless Bill has anything additional?
Well, I was going to suggest a, a change to the, uh, number twenty-one, but do you want to continue the discussion, and then we'll go over detailed changes? Because as you can see, I can't do two things at once.
So, what are they?
Okay. What is the change to twenty-one?
Exactly.
Oh, okay, go ahead, that was, that's a, wait, and then we'll take Francois's next question, go ahead.
So, really, uh, do you guys have a suggestion for the change in the wording of twenty-one? Um, we'll, we'll add to the last, add to the paragraph, this does not preclude site preparation between these dates, between the prohibited dates, but then you're going to potentially import materials to do site preparation. So, we could change the first sentence, no trucking or importation of organic paper fiber materials, or however you want, short paper fibers?
S P A.
Yes, yeah.
And then you don't need the last, well, you skipped the last sentence.
It would be good if it didn't preclude stump grinds, in case we want to use them to construct it. That's why I, I don't want to use the word organic materials, yeah. No, we're big fans of stump grinds, it works really well.
Why don't you just exclude the paper fiber specific, and allow all the other...
That's what I'm saying, yeah, so no trucking or importation of short paper fibers into the site shall take place after October thirty-first or before April thirtieth, many year. And then the intent being to, uh, I'll read it completely, the intent is to avoid trucks attempting to enter the site driveway, which is very steep, and not being able to safely maneuver into the site or down and out of the site when weather conditions...
If you're going to allow them to bring gravel up there, do we really need that?
No, I think we should take it out. The intent.
If you're using stump grinds, are they from trees on the property already? Or you would be importing them, okay?
Okay, so, twenty-one will read, no trucking or importation of short paper fiber materials into the site shall take place after October thirty-first or before April thirtieth, many year. This does not preclude site preparation between these dates. Short and sweet.
Okay. Go ahead.
Another question, we just reviewed sixteen again, uh, the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Not familiar with one of those.
Okay, you're not in agricultural use here, you're a restoration, which makes you, um, under federal law, you were, you are required to file an NPDS, on a, you're actually required to have a SWIP, which is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So, an NPDS is the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and that is an online filing that either the contractor or the owner does with the U.S. EPA.
Is it Army Corps or is it EPA?
EPA. Um, and then, in order to do that filing, you have to have a document, which is a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP, S W triple P. And what that is, is simply a lot of verbiage to say, if I get a lot of rain, this is what I'm going to do. And if, when I do that, and it overwhelms the erosion controls, this is what I'm going to do. And it also requires that a competent person, sort of like the trench laws, a competent person has to, on a regular basis, inspect the erosion controls in the perimeter of the site and document that damage has not occurred from a half-inch rain or more, half-inch in twenty-four hours. It's not us, this is, this is a federal requirement, uh, I don't know that it applies to farms, but it applies to everything but farm.
The site has the stormwater retention built into it, so...
Right.
Maybe we can get some of that information through previous gravel removal permits?
I can send you a sample SWIP in Word, in Word file.
And SWCA can do it, so I'm just trying to...
Oh, SWCA, SWCA is working on one of our solar fields in town, they can do this in their sleep.
I, I just, I'm trying to still add up the costs where I'm going, because it just...
I understand.
It's a new one on us for this, because like ninety percent of our work is on agriculture, so, um, I've never been asked.
Is there an expensive filing fee with it?
No fee.
No fee?
But you got, uh, for all intents and purposes, it has to be done by an engineer or an expert in erosion control.
Will you send them the link and the information?
We're, we're familiar with the process.
Okay.
We have...
People will do it, good.
We have a very, uh, short plans. There you go.
Okay. Are we ready to take questions from the board?
I'm ready.
Okay, Francois.
It's not a question, it's, well, I, I do have one question, I have a couple of quick, I'm, um, uh, on the finding section, section on page three, quick question, finding seven point three, everywhere it does reference, uh, this as being Worcester Road, yet we are getting here as frontages on Gardner Road.
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
The northern part of the road is Gardner Road.
I know, but that part is Worcester Road, right?
Page twenty-three.
It's all Worcester Road, yeah, that whole road is Worcester Road, no Gardner Road, not even near there.
Good catch, okay.
I missed that one.
Obviously, I missed that one.
Typos, uh, quickly, section five, member Francois, F R A N C O I S.
Hold on, where are you?
Uh, page two, page two of ten.
You made him Francis and he's French.
C, C, C O I S. I mean, I, I don't care, but I know that legally it's not my name.
I have no L on my name, otherwise it's right, there's like three of them.
Yeah, I got it.
One right below.
Yeah, that's an easy search in the place.
Oh, yeah.
And, and a signature line?
Is it right?
No, double L.
Oh, you guys tell them.
Page five.
Yes.
Very top, earth removal per, per middle.
I got that already.
You got that already?
Yeah.
All right, I think that's all I could find.
All right, I need to, uh...
Oh, and then we did say, and I think we, unless the board disagrees, that the word A modification on top of page nine per sentence will actually say any modification of the source.
All right, yeah, I already made that change.
You made that change.
Section...
Let me fix, uh, Bill's name while I'm here.
Well, yeah, I've never had it spelled that way before. Who else?
Yeah, that's your one.
Then you did indicate that on, uh, item thirty-nine, you're taking the editor's note out, right? That's what I have.
We, we can all stop back and sign this if we were to get to that point, this is just too, too much to try to...
Right, right.
But we'll see.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's good, I want to see it, come back.
Catch.
Okay.
An express.
Don't you love...
Comments from John or Bill?
Yep. Well, the other one, I'm fine with those.
Are there, um, comments from any of the petitioner crowd out there?
Anybody else?
Yep, okay, um...
Do we need a motion, Phil?
We, if we're, if we're...
Yeah.
Because we have to be...
Ready, ready to go, we would have, I think, I have done a little bit of...
The motion to sign this?
It would be...
The motion to accept.
Okay.
The motion to accept, to, accept the decision as with the corrections and amendments.
I make that motion.
My second?
Just on the decision, yes, okay?
No, it was.
First? First?
No, he was first, he was second.
I made the motion, up what you said.
Okay, any further discussion?
C O I S.
C O I S.
Did you catch that?
I did.
You did.
Okay, so all favor of approving the decision, signify, say aye.
As amended.
As amended, say aye, all right. And then a permit, and then a second vote to issue the permit, having accepted the decision?
Didn't we already vote to?
You voted to approve the permit last night, so that's fine, it's just the administrative action to approve the decision that's corrected. Unless I prove, unless it gets printed out, which we might be able to, you guys can sign it and then I will submit it to the town clerk and then make sure everyone's copied.
Okay, and you're gonna follow up on, on the financial matters in here?
Well, that'll be Bill, because he'll be doing the first site inspection to make sure everything's done for construction, and that's it. That's item in here, the financial matters have to be taken care of before.
Okay. All right. Do we, we could move on to our, to welcome our guest here, Kristin Bonban?
Yes, done.
Bonban. And here, it's an action, it's an item that's gonna require action, while you guys work on completing this.
Yep.
But, but also we, okay. If it's, you feel too pressured, you know, we can all stop by tomorrow, it's up to you, but we are gathered here, so.
Do you have access to this?
You can't find me a joint.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, everyone, attending, with the project.
Thank you.
Good night.
There it is, you got it. You got it, Bill.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, we can't see you actually, so come up to the table and have a seat. So.
Oh, okay.
I'll sit right here.
Uh, you ever want to sit down at the end, just because?
Oh, so the camera can see you?
Oh, yeah, come join me about that. Because my chair is caught in a crack or something, maybe.
Put my water in the water.
Here we go. Can you capture her on the video there?
We got her.
Okay. You're on TV.
All right, guys, so, so, so step one in all of this is, we, I need to find a host town, I'm not a member of your community, I'm from Barnsville, and.
Can you just give me a name, please?
Kristin, my name is Kristin Bonban.
Thank you.
Hi. So, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than approval, but I guess we're, we're gonna follow the laws here. So, the first thing I need is, as on a hunt for a host town, we would love, my husband and I, just us, we're not a big business, we want to become legally licensed to grow medical marijuana to supply to the existing dispensaries, just for cultivation only. This would open up a few jobs as far as shuttle drivers go, but what's, California started this with WAM, it's the Women and Men's Alliance for Medical Marijuana, and they started off as a donation process before it was legal to sell, and we kind of really want to mirror something like that, where we can help out the town. There's a property for sale, right now, we want to live on the property, we have a family, there's a property for sale, and if zoning and everything goes well, that's, that's the dream, so, that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, she sent us a very nice letter, it's in the packet.
Yes.
Yep.
And this property is located on, I want to say Hale Road, is that right?
94.
Hale Road.
Well, it's called Hubbardston Homestead.
Okay, right, I know.
It's not a farm finder.
Trying to think what your property is.
I can't picture it myself, but.
We, should you do this, you would be our first farm in town, because a relatively new bylaw that was passed. And we do have rules that, that break down, I guess you saw the site, and how it's zoned, that area is zoned, residentially, culture, so you couldn't have a shop there, but you could grow there, in theory.
Yeah, no shop.
And then, if you're going over, under 5,000 square feet, which I'm sure you would be, it would require a special permit from the board, okay? And then, we really can't do anything until you have sort of gotten clearance from the State Cannabis Control Commission, under 94G, right? So.
935 CMRA.
Right, and the reg does regulations to go with it.
Yep.
Right, and I don't, I don't know that process, we haven't really gone through it and we're not responsible for it, but maybe you're familiar with it or at least read about it.
Well, so I thought this was the first step, because it's your town, you know, I could get them to come out and pay the fee for them to look at the site, but if the town is not in on it.
Well, we can't grant you, the problem is, we can't grant you a special permit, which you would need unless, I mean, it's kind of a.
Trade value.
Right.
We do have the bylaws that would allow you to do it, that it requires a special permit. You can't get the special permit until you go through the state process.
Yeah, right, and we really don't have, you generally would not hold a public hearing until you filed the special permit, because.
Otherwise, it's all theory.
Right, otherwise, it's all theory. So, and of course, until we hear the details, we can't really say we would support it or not support it. But we can say, it has, was a little of the town, passed fairly substantially, we're a very farm-friendly community, and, you know, somebody's got to be first, why not? But I really don't know what the state requires, I do don't know.
Do you know the requirements by the state are? No?
Well, I think they, I think it goes by case by case, they gotta come and look at it, yeah.
Which, whereabouts is this firm located on, the other one? Have you gone and looked at it?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
So, we, we saw it online, so, we, this is really, literally my first step, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's good to come in, we appreciate you coming in.
So, besides a special permit, where, where would our licenses available for other spots that don't need a special permit?
Can I, can I ask a very fundamental question? Is, is your intention just to grow?
Yes.
And then supply the growing material, the grown material, but not to dispense it or distribute it here in the town of, in the town of Hubbardston, right?
No, to dispensaries, you could open a dispensary.
I think it's very important to understand whether or not there is going to be a selling component at the retail level or at the medical marijuana level.
Or just a cultivation license.
So, you're purely a grower?
Yes.
And you're, you're, you want to grow that plus other things, or just the medical marijuana?
Just medical marijuana, we would like to keep the farmstead going, that what's growing on the property, we'd love to have a farm stand, but nothing big.
The, the answer to your question is unless you're growing under 5,000 square feet, you do need a permit, a special permit.
Correct, so anything over 5,000 square feet does require a special permit. So, if you have a plot of land that's less than 4,000, less than 5,000, 4,999 square feet, you can grow it.
You don't need a permit.
And you don't need a special permit from us.
Not need a special permit.
But you still need to go to the state to get one.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly, but from a town's perspective, my understanding is, is my understanding, and we would have to obviously review this here in more detail, but if it's like less than.
Yeah.
Then there's no special permit required.
In her zone.
In, in, in that zone.
Yes.
If, once you start touching the 5,000 square feet or go over that, that's when you are in a different situation, right?
Right.
This is what our bylaws says, you know, it's 22.4. Right about here, 22.4.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Tells you all that.
So, and by the way, these bylaws are online?
Yeah, well, we want, no, we're in tier one, if not a microbusiness, so.
But I just want.
Well, tier one would be under 5,000 square feet?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, definitely.
Oh, yes, sorry, that's not a very big area.
No.
But maybe it is for marijuana, huh?
So, I think, I think as long as you understand what the town has as its requirements for determining one way or the other after what becomes a special permit, that should be your guidance.
It would help you a lot.
And then, you need to know that if you decide that you're going to go over to 5,000 square feet, or 5,000 or over, that at that point in time, a special permit will be required. And not only that, but you will potentially have some other items that we need to look at, right?
So, I can tell you, having done grow houses.
Yes.
That you, you need to start at the Cannabis Control Commission, because you need to get registered with them as a potential, and they will give you a preapproval, which is your preapproval to come to the town. And then, that, that's your preapproval, they don't actually approve you until you are 100% built, ready to grow, and then they do a final inspection and they, and they go through all the dams.
And if it was less than the 5,000 square feet, you don't even need a special permit, you just need the preapproval.
Yeah, that's for the state.
But the state has a lot of regulations about securing the site and.
And if it's, if you're, if you're growing medicinal, it's a much bigger deal than recreational, because medicinal has to meet.
Criteria of purity and standards and things of that nature.
But it can also be.
But those are not imposed by the town, those are imposed at a state level. And so, from the state perspective, you would have additional requirements that we are not in the business of reviewing, imposing, or supervising in any way, shape, or form, okay? I mean, it's great that you came over here.
Oh, we appreciate it.
Hopefully, you have a time to, before it's too dark to go by 94 Hale and look at a really good place.
I'm trying to think of where it is.
They have an open house this weekend, so we're really coming back.
Oh, okay.
It is a very nice town, we have a lot of agriculture.
I know where it is. You know exactly where it is.
That's, you know, that's what we're looking for, a small farming town.
We're trying to keep, keep farms going.
Yeah.
All right.
So, I hope this helps answer the questions that you have.
Thank you.
Come see us again, we hope you like it.
Welcome to Hubbardston.
Okay, yes, welcome to Hubbardston, we try to be welcoming, we do.
Take care.
Thanks, guys.
I lost them, Christina isn't back, I was gonna, see, that thing is, matters are not recently anticipated by the chair, remind me, but we'll wait till Christina comes back. We're supposed to be signing some documents for the registry of deeds and so forth, so when we're signing things.
Oh, that's right.
Do not run away before we get to Christina's. But I'm gonna skip to all business, because there's no reason we can't discuss 91 Williamsville Road.
That's right.
Which Bill is also our advisor on.
Correct.
While Christine is trying to fix our document, so.
Hopefully, all she's doing is printing.
I gotta find my, I gotta find your letter, but I have it here.
I have copies here.
I think we already got that, right?
We had it from our last.
Five or six.
I put it right next to your packet, if you're looking for the 91 Williamsville Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Put it right.
Yeah, I got, I have my copy here.
I'm sorry, should we go on with that, or do you want to, we haven't really started?
I have two of them.
Here, thank you. So, are we ready to sign the decision, we can take a break and do that, will we pick up?
I did put the very own plan.
Do you have another copy of the, oh, you got it?
Yes.
Great, moving on.
To make sure that the.
Okay, let's give Bill a minute, he can't do two things at once in this.
What about three, can you do three things?
Come here.
I'm juggling, what's that, Jim?
No, 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 I just had moved my camera for her.
Oh, you did it.
I knew exactly where that was, because I read the bylaw before.
So, I just want you to, if you want to mark it on yours, I didn't know.
Well, I thought I'd give you a heads up, since I had read the bylaw, but when you're my age, you just think it'll stick in your brain.
It's all here.
I wrote it, I can, I would remember it when I came, so I would remember it when I went.
Okay, so the battery's changed, we're back on. Christina, while he's checking.
Yes.
Do you want to have us sign what else, something about the registry, something?
Administrative actions, in one moment.
Everybody got a pen?
I do not.
Okay, I have one, you need it.
I know, there's one paper right, or are we signing?
That's wrong.
There's two pages you're signing.
I'll be more prepared next time.
There are.
It's your first meeting, though, yeah.
Tell us what we're signing on.
I always throw my book.
Two things we need to sign tonight, one is, Alice, you and Francois have already signed this to the registry. And I just need your signature to submit to the registry. Handing that down, John needs to sign it.
Dinner quick, sign here, obviously, sir.
Another one?
Today is the 21st.
Just that.
August 21st.
Last two days.
Election appointment.
Don't, don't put that in, I'll fill that in.
Okay.
And just, um, you, Bill, and then I'll have to bring it back for Craig to sign.
Okay.
Bill, second.
I have to disconnect my computer and go again, so, and I'll need your flash drive again, except, thank you. And then, the other thing I would like the board to review is, the accountant is starting to do a new process, by which every time I pay bills, we print out this form, so that the board can review what, where the board money is going.
Oh, good.
And you guys can just look it over and sign it, I figured I would let you know, this is just passed around. Most of that is relating to the Katysto matter and the monies that went out, also, it's the 95 Williamsville Road, the final monies for that, your check was issued, and then the other check was sent to the landscaping place that was paying for the beside Williamsville Reclamation.
Right.
So.
So, one we just signed, it was like one copy that needed signing?
There's only one copy of this.
So, we did that, right?
Yes, you guys did it perfectly, it was faxed over to the registry, you guys, this is your original signature, the last one's faxed to the registry, so they had it on file for the A and R, you just signed.
Okay.
And then, this one, once Craig's signature is on it, I will fax it to them and I will actually send them the original.
Okay.
So, but they'll have it as soon as possible, I'll probably actually fax this one out, and then when I can get Craig in here to sign his name, I'll fax that one out. They already have Craig and Bill's name, though, on file, so it's not as urgent to get that over.
Oh, good.
Okay, excellent.
I may ask a clarification, the old village landscape balance, that will speak back, because they have given a original.
$2,400, and then that was the amount left over after Bill charged us for his time.
Thank you.
So, so, I just wanted to.
Just sign right there, you're on the board.
Red deed deeds, when we sign, like we sign this decision.
And that'll just go into our general notes?
They have to have records, that's part of the title.
I leave the top one.
That we are the.
I leave the top one for you.
The present planning board members, at the time it was signed, is a title.
Not with the board health, we, we have to share, have to sign.
Yours is the top one.
You may have signed it, I don't know if they're gonna do it with the board health, but I know that came, that's the form now, I'm filling out for all vendors.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if the board is helpful, but we'll be implementing that as well. But when I talked to the accountant, she said that they're leaving those on the bank. Basically, all it needs is my signature to pay the bills.
Right.
This is so that the board can review it and be aware of it.
Yeah, checks and balances.
Exactly. And so I'll keep that in the file for this meeting going forward. And that's what I have, I think, administratively for tonight, and I'll go make another copy real quick.
Is this something you could send out to us by email so we can review?
I could, yeah, after it's signed, or I could do it before the meeting from now on. We're gonna, thinking of putting on the agenda items, just an administrative line, so that anytime there's anything the board is gonna have to review, I can just do that, and I'll make sure it's an attachment going forward. It's sort of a new thing.
Right, so we can have it on an email. We can actually look at it and really think about it.
And then if you have any questions, you can have them at the meeting. That would be fine.
These are just checks going out. They're not the balances in the accounts.
Right.
No, no, we don't, we don't have those. So I've got a plan on checking back in in about a half an hour.
Okay.
If that works. It works.
Okay.
Can go good for that long?
You should be okay.
All right, now.
Okay, I'm gonna go print this. Let me just get my keys. It's unlocking, because of people out in the hallway, I can't leave the doors unlocked.
I see. Do you need Bill?
No.
If you don't, we'll have him go, move on to Ninety One Williamsville Road. Is that all right with you, everybody?
Totally fine. If you guys do anything, it's being recorded, so I can make a minutes later.
We'll try to be, to be clear and speak up.
I can say.
Okay, so. I just was a point of clarification here, that your opinion was dated, I think, or your, or your, I shouldn't say opinion, whatever you would call it, report, was dated the sixth.
Yep.
And then, and I don't know whether you were copied on it, but we got a letter, also dated the sixth, from the new owner. Did you see that?
I didn't. I got an email on the sixth, from the new owner.
An email, maybe that was it. A letter via email, that did correct at least the fact that he owns it.
Yeah.
And told us, I don't know whether he, I don't remember how he said, but addressed the issue of who owns the deposit.
I know you're reading it, but I won't steal it.
I have it right here. You wanna look at it.
So I also saw, and probably it was my search engine from email, there, a solar report from last year.
I saw that.
For two thousand eighteen. So this is what they're supposed to be providing us every year?
Well, the, the report is supposed to address the maintenance perform.
Yeah, well, he says no major maintenance required.
There you go.
But that means the equipment. I mean, this is, but there's work required.
That's right. So, to summarize my letter, we always thought that they were noncompliance principally because ownership has changed. And while they notified the assessors of the change, they didn't notify the planning board. And my big concern really was the bond. But having met with them, and of course, this project is one of the worst, this is the worst solar project that we've ever had in town. This is the one that they cut a half acre of wetlands. They went over the stone wall and cut thirty and forty inch oak trees on the neighbor's property, knowing that. And they just didn't do anything right. It's, it's been a thorn in the side of the town for a very, very long time, which is why we wanted to revisit it. The bottom line is, it's been taken over by TGC Hubbardston. And they have met with me on site. I've gone over, the drainage basin needs to be cleaned. They still have erosion on the site. They have some other, you know, issues. The berm has not been addressed. The berm was made out of slash and debris from the site. It wasn't made into a really good quality berm. The trees have been dying on the berm. And the gentleman that lives across from the street is a former planning board member, so he knows the requirements, and he has filed a complaint with the planning board, saying that they haven't caught up. Having met with their, Nick Minneke, their project manager, he and I have reviewed the site's status. He's assured me that he's getting a landscape crew in there. They're gonna fix the ruts in the roads.
They're gonna have it today working.
They're gonna add seed so that we can get more stabilization. They're cleaning out the basin. So really, there are only two outstanding items in my mind. And one of them was, I needed actual proof that they own the property, number one. And number two, I've had conversations with the town treasurer and treasurer's office. If the bond is in somebody else's name, and somebody comes and said, "I gave you a bond for X amount of dollars. I'm no longer the owner." The town has an obligation to release the funds to the owner, to the, to the.
The original bond.
The original bond person. And that has been really my biggest concern, because they were required by the planning board to put up a forty-five thousand dollar cash bond, which the town puts in an interest and accruing account, which hopefully keeps up with inflation at two and two and a half percent. And, and it has, because the bond is now fifty-four thousand dollars instead of the original forty-five. So, the outstanding matter is the berm. And they came with the landscape architect and showed you some pretty pictures. I, I rendered an opinion that I don't think that that should be a very pretty berm. I don't think we should dress it up. I think we should have natural plant materials in there, so when you go by it, you don't see a solar farm. You just see a berm that's landscaped like the side of the road regularly. Yeah, it can have plants. It can have rhododendron. It can have things like that, but we don't, I, I don't think, and it's your call. I don't think we should be putting, putting in a garage flower display for the spring or whatever that's gonna draw your eye to the solar farm. I think that the, the fence that is the gate needs to be obstructed, screened, or something. They need to come up with something that you can't actually see through the fence into the solar field.
You can now.
Right.
Why can't they just make a driveway that turns behind the berm?
They could, or.
I don't know a place to do that.
I was thinking, just put barn board and let it gray out over the front face of the, the fence, so it kinda looks just like a farm gate. But there are a whole lot of options. That's why I said, you've hired a landscape architect. You guys can figure it out. And these are just my recommendations to you. And they're waiting for some sort of response from my recommendations before they proceed.
I think they should give us a plan, because this plan was a little inset. First of all, they didn't do it, and second of all, all the plants are wrong, and it should be more detailed.
Right.
I mean, you're not gonna, you're never gonna grow anything reasonable unless you put soil, a berm soil.
Well, the other part of that is, the, only a very specific type of plant can live on the top of that berm, if it's gonna be an evergreen. Cause, I mean, it gets complete southern exposure, and it gets the wind. So that's a recipe for disaster for a lot of evergreens that are just baking in the sun in the winter. Yeah, dry out, exactly. So a cedar would do it. Any of those things, like you see them on the side of the roads.
Do they not have to rebuild the berm first, really bring in earth and?
I think they do.
It's just a pile of debris right now.
Really?
Yeah.
If they threw a little dirt on top of it.
It was the slash. Slash is the, the stumps and the grindings of, I mean, if they used grindings, that would've worked. Stump grindings, but they didn't. They took the branches and everything else, just pushed it and pushed dirt with a bulldozer. So the two outstanding items, going backwards yet again, are the bond. And they have shown me, I looked at the legal documents that they sent, where they are the inheritors of all the assets of Seaboard Solar Hubbardston. I still think that they should change the name on the bond to themselves.
Yeah. It could be required.
So this is really, the only two outstanding items I see are the berm and the bond.
And the gate.
And the planting.
The gate, yeah. I consider that part of the same.
Or we should call it.
The front screening.
Yeah, there you go.
I think.
The privacy screening.
This, this is dragged on. This, this neighbor across the street's troubled this for a long time.
Yes, it has.
And I think we ought to require the berm be, they give us cross-sections, they give us height, they give us composition, they give us a plan.
And we give them a timeframe.
And it should be done, he, he said, he said in his letter, oh, he's gonna fix everything in thirty days. How many times has he said that? Maybe not him, but it is on his property.
No, we gotta give him that.
So I think we wanna tell him that by our October meeting, we want a landscape plan that also show, that specifies the composition of the berm, that shows the shape of it, specifies the plannings according to your recommendation.
Well, it's really, that's my recommendation to you. I don't know, cause they did, it is on the, on the planning board's website, a link to the planting plan that they provided.
Yeah, but that's also what's here.
That's so long.
But it's red oaks on the park peak.
That, that was.
This is superseded? This is one of the.
That's the original. That's what they originally proposed.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Seven, eight years ago. But, but they never did it.
They never did it, but they're also, so I want a new plan, which is what they are gonna do that's right. With the trees, I agree. In the front of the berm.
Yep. Okay.
That would be by October second.
October second. They should be able to get a plan to us by October second. They got six weeks.
Yep.
So make a motion to require.
I'll make that motion, to require them to provide us a detailed plan of.
The berm and the plantings.
You said it in a better way, though. I wanna, detailed plan.
Front screening. Berm, planting, and gate.
And.
For our October meeting, or October second meeting.
Following the recommendations of Bill's outline, yeah. Second.
One second. I'd like to discuss this here for a second. I have some concerns just with regards to the fact that this is a scenic road. I think you brought up some very interesting and very good points, one having to do with the fact that whatever they propose really should not be an eye catcher. It should actually blend in with what we have as a scenic road. I think this is certainly something that we need to instill in them, that whatever they come up with has to follow that characteristic. And so, we're not telling them what to do, but I think what is very important to note here is, is we have a scenic road in town here. It has been grossly disturbed by this outfit. We do not want them to come up with something that is going to not adhere to what this is, which is a scenic road. And so if they're going to be working either with the landscape architect or with some other form of personnel, that they incorporate the notion of the fact that they are basically in a scenic road, and it has to basically provide them with a plan back that integrates this, so that, for all intents and purposes, you don't even know that there's a solar plant there.
Right.
That's what I would like to, as well.
That's what I wanna see.
So, so you wanna add language that should conform with our scenic road bylaw?
Exactly. And I, and I think, we're not gonna tell them what that is, but I think we all need to understand that this has been, it's been an ISO, it continues to be an ISO. We do not want it to continue to be an ISO.
Is there in fact a wall there, a stone wall, too?
A remnant wall.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It, it exists in front of the berm.
Did they disturb it?
I can't prove it, because it was pretty, pretty rubbly, and I know they disturbed, they disturbed the curb when they were building, because multiple trucks drove over the curb, and they cracked it many, many times.
Will we be, be within our?
I tried that with DPW, and we really didn't get any traction.
No, I meant to restore the wall, to improve the wall.
Yeah, they, they, I don't have a before picture.
Yeah.
About eight years ago. But their landscape architect, at his last presentation, said that that was part of what they were gonna do. The project manager kinda pulled him back from that, but I can pass that message on.
I think we should make it part of the plan.
Yeah, it's part of the scenic road.
And improvement of the wall, and in performance with the scenic road bylaw.
Cause Ninety Five is the lot next door.
Exactly. Precisely. This is where we're going down this year. We did it there. I think we need to establish, again, we're trying, we're, we're trying to bring them back in performance with what that scenic road really was all about.
So we can make it the wall at least of the standards and quality as Ninety One, the butter.
Either side, sure.
Yeah. But make sure that's on the plan.
That whatever vegetation, whatever landscaping form it takes, it has to conform what, what, what the typical scenic road around that area looks like.
That was my thought, yeah.
And that, that I think is important for us to lay out.
And the other question I have, one word is still in the discussion, is the berm is supposed to be how high?
Is there any?
Yes.
It's a really.
Eight, eight feet.
And does, well, okay, so if it's eight feet, and then it has plantings that are on top of it, and that's behind the trees in the front, so only just trunks, the plantings.
Mount morrals proposed on the top, which will burn.
Can we?
Perfect, because that's, that's natural for that area.
It is, except that it's on the top of the berm, and it's.
And that one will survive, will not survive there.
South facing, right? The windows.
That will not survive.
Window stripping, yeah.
So, to your point, that needs to be.
They need to be on the other side of the berm.
Exactly.
No, I'm wrong. It's spruce trees on top, which is what they put in. They didn't put the red maple, the oak, or the mountain roll. They only put spruce trees on the top.
Yeah.
And they've died.
And they've died. So we're not, they're removing dead trees.
Right.
I think they maybe really oughta, we do have a forum for scenic road bylaw, work on the scenic road bylaw strip, and they oughta complete it as part of this entirely.
Sounds good to me. I'll take a friendly amendment.
Okay. So, the amendments are, they're gonna do the berm, they're gonna do the landscaping, they're gonna do the gate, they're gonna do the wall reconstruction up to the neighboring one, and they're gonna comply with the scenic bylaw.
In performance with.
In performance.
In performance with the scenic bylaw, but also in compliance with.
In compliance, yes.
Does that also incorporate the stone wall, too?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, I still have a second.
I still have a second.
Okay.
So, the action moving forward, are you sending them a letter, or am I sending them a letter?
We can send a letter, right? I mean, I, I'm.
I can send the letter with regards to the motion maybe today, and the requirements. I have no objection to that.
Okay.
I'm still working for you on it. I haven't even voiced on this one, so.
Yeah, do we have money to pay you on this?
You have money.
I'm gonna let Bill handle it.
Bye.
So, cause you're gonna be the one supervising it. So if you write it, covering all those points.
Wouldn't it be better coming from us, too, though?
What?
Looks, I think we should do a letter also.
Do the vote, do the vote.
Let's do the letter.
Okay.
And then he follows up with his. I just think it's more.
All right. I can do the vote, and then Bill could do a letter stating what the requirements are. It's like the vote was made, that they need to do this, and then Bill follows up with the exact requirements. The only thing is with the scenic road, you need to be made aware that they're gonna have to a public hearing, and there will be checks associated with that.
Yes.
Well, they did.
I just wanna make sure that they're aware of that.
They, they did a scenic road when they did the original solar farm. That was part of.
Oh, okay, can we?
No, because this is different. This is, every time you do work on a scenic road, you have to do a new, it's not a very big fee. What is that fee?
Well, it's posting in the Gardener News, which could be up to about a hundred and seventy dollars, and the notification of a butters.
Isn't good, isn't it?
So.
I think the butters should be notified.
Yeah.
They've had quite the history with this project.
Yeah, well, that's another reason why I'd like to see it go forward from a letter from us, and then also from Bill, because this has been going on for a long time. I've only been on this board a year, and this has been nothing but a problem. And I don't think we should go lightly on this. I think we should be forceful and push along, and let's get it done.
Okay.
Yeah, set, set, set the example.
Okay. I'll copy one of the letter I sent, so that you know what I sent.
And Christine, I'll work with you on it. I'll come in. Um.
Done.
I never get anything done. Okay.
I'm sorry, I need it all in favor. We have a motion and a second on this. I need a vote, please.
Motion on the board.
Can we second it?
Okay, all, okay, all the favor? Fine.
Thank you.
Well, so, we're ready to sign this?
I'll leave you the blue folder back, so it's easy to keep track of.
Yeah, there's a lot of paper on this table.
I created a lot of it, or.
Killing trees.
Very last bit.
Should we review it first? Or maybe go older, or come back to Hubbardston somehow? I do have a question for you. You did indicate this is.
I can't read that.
Yeah, point eight one.
Christina is.
That's it?
Oh, yeah, she is.
So, all right, here goes.
Nothing nowadays.
Nowadays. It's not economical nowadays, but they had the first grant, so that they were tax-free, and they.
And for some reason, I always thought that they were larger than point eighty-one.
Well, they do wanna build next door.
You're lucky.
Oh, I know that.
That beautiful house is falling into District Ninety Five. They went to the conservation commission to clear the backland. But now, I guess there's a problem with the, and I don't honestly know what the issue, but I think there's a problem with cash flow.
What a shame with that house that's sitting there.
Isn't it? That's a beautiful home. And yard, yeah.
We have a beautiful barn in the back there.
Francois, you can date that. I think there's a date line I didn't fill in.
It's stated at the top. The date is twenty-first.
Okay.
It is twenty-first.
Okay.
As it is an administrative action, I'm not working, and assuming I can get Craig's signature after the fact.
You don't even need it.
I know we don't need it, but he has a line on here. I should know. We need, if I need to put not present or, we don't leave any blank lines.
You can leave a blank line.
Okay, thank you.
So you're going to get that decision out tomorrow?
Yes, to the town clerk and all, so that, um, I scan to everyone.
Yes, this gentleman, who wants to take.
Mark, did you wanna comment to us?
Do you wanna copy now? I can make a copy.
Have we signed it?
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be courteous, okay.
Well, you're doing that. I'll make two.
Yep, I'll make two.
What else we got?
Never know.
Oh, jeez.
I buried mine.
Listen here.
We'll try to get that letter out right away, too. If we have, well, my question is, is the October first date. Uh, the October second date, because our meeting, our October meeting, is, is, is our thinking that we wanna have the hearing on that plan for the scenic road published at the same time? Because the question to me is, it is getting very late in October to do any planning or earthwork.
Right, so we're gonna wait all winter, and then.
Right.
So do you wanna, what do you wanna do with this? Do we wanna?
Let me ask them what they want to do.
Well, if they can get it all rolling forward that quickly, we should have it, do it that night.
Well, you wanna tell them what to do, so why don't we just tell them you will file a scenic road application?
Then the date, the date has to be before the second, because she's gotta have publication. So it's in about a month instead of five, six weeks.
It's not hard to make that application, so.
No, but it, but you have to have a week to publish it, and you gotta submit it Monday to get it in there. I mean.
Right, so we're the, almost the last week of August here. So that gives us four weeks, one, two, three, four, five weeks.
Right.
Okay.
You got that?
I guess if we save.
Bill says that they can do it.